I call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM, November 13th, 2012. I'd like to invite any veterans in the audience to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you very much. I have in front of me the served warrant. We have a quorum of 15, I believe. Just want to check that. Okay, great. We have our town clerk, we have the moderator, so we have all the things that we need for a legal meeting. Is there any objection to dispensing of the reading of the warrant? Seeing none, I'll just read the warrant service. "To any constable of the town of Douglas, greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify the inhabitants of the town of Douglas who are qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Douglas High School Auditorium, 33 Davis Street in said Douglas, on Tuesday, the 13th day of November, 2012 A.D., for a special town meeting commencing at 7:00 PM for the following purposes," of which are seven articles. "You are hereby directed to serve this special town warrant," or a town meeting warrant, "by posting an attested copy thereof in the municipal center and at least two other places in the town of Douglas to which the public has general access at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and may do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk, the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands the 16th day of October 2012 A.D., the Honorable Board of Selectmen Timothy Bonin, Keith Brown, Harold Davis, and Jeffrey Laporte. I have this day posted an attested copy of the warrant for the special town meeting in the municipal center and at least two other places in the town of Douglas to which the public has general access at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and may do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk, the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands the 16th day of October 2012 A.D., the Honorable Board of Selectmen Timothy Bonin, Keith Brown, Harold Davis, and Jeffrey Laporte. I have this day posted an attested copy of the warrant for the special town meeting in the municipal center and at least two other places at the town, or in the town to which the public has general access as directed. Signed, Carol E. Field, Constable, 102212." I'd like to, at this time, introduce the non-voting members of the town meeting. They're people who come in from out of town to offer their expertise should town meeting need it and are called upon to speak at the pleasure of the meeting. Is there any objection to allowing them to speak at this meeting? Seeing none, I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee over to my right. They work with the various town entities to present the budget and make recommendations. Also like to recognize the people who make this meeting possible, the Board of Selectmen who prepare the warrant and work year-round on issues affecting the town, department heads, municipal employees, committee members, and all others working on behalf of the town and town meeting. I'd like to recognize our counters, Eileen Demore and Ann Burgess, I apologize, our checkers, Eileen Demore and Ann Burgess, our counters Suzanne Kane, Betty Ann McCollum, and Deborah Blaine. Our mic runner tonight will be probably a very busy Mitch Cohen. Thank you for volunteering to do that. A little bit about how a town meeting will be run. We encourage participation. Please remember, some of the most effective points you're going to make are short and to the point. If you have questions for how the meeting is proceeding, please stand and call point of order. I will make my best attempt to explain to you what's going on. If you have, the warrant is set, it is considered a warning. The warrant is set by the Board of Selectmen. It's considered a warning for what we'll be talking about here tonight. Anything that's beyond what's in that warrant is considered out of the scope and will not be discussed tonight. A motion is made and seconded. There'll be a proponent's speech. At that time, I'll open up the floor for questions and answers. Please limit them to questions. They are to be directed to me, and I will then direct them to the person who can best answer them. The reason I have that is so that you can get any information that you need before we then move into debate. After the question-and-answer period has expired, we will then move into debate. At that time, again, please, any points that you would like to make, direct them through the moderator. After debate is exhausted or the question is called, we will then move to a vote. In order to call the question, which is basically saying, hey, you know, we're done talking about this, we would like a vote, you must be recognized. So please wait until I recognize you. If you would like to call the question at that time, I will go ahead and recognize that, depending on where we are in the debate. A vote will have to be taken on that. It requires a two-thirds vote, so please keep that in mind. Votes will be taken by either unanimous consent, which I will say, is there any dissent to passing this article? If there is none, the article will be considered passed unanimously. There's also a voice vote, where I'll just take a sense of the meeting, the typical, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. And then, in some cases, I will ask for a counted vote, in which case I'll ask you to stand and hold up your voter card, and we'll count the votes. If you cannot stand, please go ahead and sit and hold up your voter card. Amendments must be made in writing, and they should be made after the question-and-answer session, so during debate. And again, you must be recognized in order to make the motion. And keep in mind, what we're doing is very serious. It has long-term and short-term impacts on all of us, but we are neighbors, so please be respectful of each other. It's a great process, and I appreciate all of you coming out today to take part in it. Before we start with the warrant, there's a, as everyone in town knows, we've had a lot of challenges, as every other town has in the area, and there's been a committee created in order to try and address those proactively. And at this time, I would just like to recognize Timothy Bonin to just tell you about that committee, as I believe that the work of that committee may directly affect town meeting in the future. Mr. Bonin.
Good evening, everyone. The Board of Selectmen established the committee during the work in our fiscal year 13 budget preparation. And looking across the room, I'm pretty certain that a good portion of the people in this room have felt in some way, shape, or form some of the effects of the cuts that we had to make. The reality is, is the town's having a difficulty or a difficult time keeping up or being able to pay for the expenses that we have. So what we did is we set up the Strategic Budget Committee, and we've been meeting since August. The group itself consists of two members of the Board of Selectmen, myself and Mike Hughes, two members of the Finance Committee, Todd Barry and Pam Holmes, two members of the School Committee, Scott Yosino and Gina Muscatell, and of course, we've got three other members, former selectwoman and vice-chair of the committee, Paula Brulette, former selectman, John Bombara, and Ray Whitehead. The committee's working well. We're dealing with some, you know, some tough issues. Frankly, I'm not having a whole lot of fun working on it, but it's something that if we methodically approach and take a peek at not only fiscal year 14 but beyond, I think we'll be in better stead. I also would like to thank and recognize Superintendent Nancy Lane, Jean Lovett, Mike Gazinski, and Courtney Keegan, who have offered not only their time but their expertise in us as we plan, plan what fiscal year 14 looks like. The process itself is still playing out, and it's premature to go into details, as there still are far too many variables to paint an accurate picture for you. What I can tell you is that the cuts we've made over the past few years have gotten us by, but it's not enough. So with that, I would urge everyone here, and for those watching at home, to watch our meetings and to get involved. There will be numerous opportunities to be heard, and we encourage each and every one of you to participate in them. Thank you.
Article 1. Mr. Bonin.
Good evening again. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $70,431 and transfer the sum of $69,000 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, and transfer the sum of $23,784 from the reserved for reduction of excluded debt for total appropriation of $163,215 to vote to fund the following amendments to Article 2 of the annual town meeting of May 7th, 2012, and continued to June 11, 2012. Increase health insurance expenses by $20,000, increase the police expenses by $4,000, increase unemployment expenses $15,515, increase ambulance wages by $49,000, increase ambulance expenses by $20,000, increase veterans' benefits by $45,000, increase other interest expense $9700, and to reduce the fiscal year 2013 debt expense budget by $617,973.
You have the floor. Yeah, you need a second. May I have a second? Most have been made and seconded. You have the floor.
This article seeks to adjust certain budgeted amounts for fiscal year 13. The increase in health insurance expenses is driven by changes in enrollment. The increase in the expenses, the increase in the police expenses is driven from unanticipated training costs. The increase in unemployment expenses is driven by higher-than-expected unemployment applications. The decrease in debt expense is primarily associated with the refinancing of the debt related to the high school construction project at a lower interest rate and a lump-sum payment from MSBA. The refinancing was completed in May and June and was not available in time to be included on the annual town meeting warrant. The ambulance wages are increasing to fund a paramedic position, which could not be funded at the annual town meeting because of unavailable ambulance receipts. The veterans' benefits are increasing to cover escalating costs associated with the payment of veteran benefits. Incidentally, the town receives 75% reimbursement from the state for these in the next fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the issue? Also seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is one where it requires a majority vote, and I will ask, is there any dissent to passing this article? Seeing none, the motion passes by unanimous consent. Article 2, the Chair recognizes Mr. Josie.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $1,577 from the sewer, the water sewer, reserved-for-debt account to the water sewer debt expense account.
Most have been made. Is there a second? Most have been made and seconded. Do you have the floor?
This is due to the restructuring of debt. A year or so ago, we didn't have the exact figures to budget, and this is just to make up the difference.
Any questions for Mr. Josie? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the issue? Okay, also seeing none. This also requires a majority vote. Is there any dissent to passing this article? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $800 from police expenses to pay the following prior-year bill, MES Solutions, which is for $800.
Most have been made and seconded. Do you have the floor?
This bill is from fiscal year 2012 and was not paid due to timing of the invoice receipt. This article seeks to transfer amounts from the current FY '13 police expenses budget to pay for this bill.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the issue? Seeing none, this requires a nine-tenths vote since it's a prior-year bill. Is there any dissent to passing this article? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Article 4, the Chair recognizes Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to deposit all insurance proceeds received in connection with the damage incurred due to the rain event of August 10th to 12th, 2012, to an insurance reimbursement receipt, receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Most have been made and seconded. Do you have the floor?
Thank you. Mitch Cohen, I share the school building committee. I'd like to give you a quick update on the school construction project, which will lead into the reasons for tonight's article. As many people know, the bids received last January were very good, as we hoped and anticipated. They were well under budget. It's far too early to project exact savings. We expect we'll know that sometime early in 2014, as the project wraps up. The new elementary school construction is well underway. For those who haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to take a ride up between the existing elementary school and the existing intermediate school, and you'll see quite a bit of work has been done. The building exterior is nearing completion. The goal, of course, is to get the building wrapped up in time for the depths of winter so that the interior of the building can be worked on during the winter. Site work is going exceptionally well. Majority of all the excavation work is done. There's, of course, still a lot of finish work to be done, but things are going even a little bit better than we anticipated in regards to site work. And substantial completion is still on track for this coming June, and I hope to have everyone at the ribbon-cutting ceremony probably in August of next year. The middle school was also part of this, to repair what we call it the middle school. It's what's currently known as the intermediate elementary school, and we're calling it the middle school because that's what it'll be at the end of the project. The first phase is complete. The auditorium reopened for student use very recently, and I understand that they had a Veterans Day event this past week in that room, and it looked, I understand, quite nice, and people are pleased with that, and I'm pleased as well. We did significant exterior repairs of the building over the summer, installation of many expansion joints, which were not included in the original design of the building. So those are mostly complete. I think we still have a little bit left to do next summer. And the gym and auditorium roofs and mechanicals to those buildings were complete, with one hiccup, which we're going to get to right now. So as I mentioned, one of the things that we had scheduled to do this past summer, which we did eventually complete, was replacing the gym roof. And that was scheduled for the first couple of full weeks in the month of August. And on August 10th, there was forecast of very, very heavy rains, and everybody knew that. That wasn't a surprise. And the folks that were doing the installation were about halfway done with the roof, and they put down a seam to connect the existing roof and the new part of the roof, and with the expectation that that would hold. And everyone arrived Monday morning and found it did not hold. There was extreme and extensive water damage in the intermediate school in that section of the building. And to quickly go through it, the gym floor was completely destroyed, totally unusable. And that was very frustrating, because we were heading into the beginning of the school year, where we did expect to use that room. There was significant damage to the music room, to the kitchen next to the cafeteria. The cafeteria itself was fine, but some of the equipment in the kitchen was damaged. The intercom system, the central computer for that, was destroyed by the water, and there was significant damage to books and student records. So all of this needed to be dealt with, much of it very quickly. The school department responded amazingly rapidly to the situation and got the school open on time, with the only exception being the gym, which is almost complete. I'd say we have about two weeks of work left in that room, and we'll have that there. But the total damage to that will probably exceed $400,000. Now luckily, as you'd expect we would, we picked up builder's risk insurance at the beginning of this project, and that will cover the majority of these repairs. There are a couple of ways that insurance can deal with things, and some of you may have experienced with this if you've ever had to deal with homeowner's insurance. Sometimes the insurance company will hire and pay somebody directly. And they did that with a couple of the first things that we needed to do here. Sometimes they'll ask you to hire who you want, and they will pay the vendor directly, and they have done that with some of these items. And then sometimes they will say, you hire who you want, you pay them, and then we will reimburse you. And for a couple of reasons, at least with our general contractor, it made some sense to do it that way, because we had an existing relationship with them, was going to be a large addition to an existing contract, so we agreed to let that happen. The other issues, we are working as hard as we can, especially for the costs incurred by the school department, to have insurance pay those vendors directly, so the school department is not out the money. Now, we can afford to do this, not because we have an extra $400,000 sitting in our pockets, but because for the next several months, we're doing no work in the intermediate school. Of course, the school is in session, so at the end of next June, the students will leave, and really, the next day, the contractors come in and take over the building for about seven months. Those students will then, of course, be in the new elementary school for the majority of next school year. So we have the money already borrowed for most of that work, and we have that in the bank, but we have this immediate expense. Once it comes around, we will need that money in order to finish our work. So what we did to allow the work, the repair work especially on the gym, to go forward, was use our money to have the contractor come in and do that work, and then get reimbursement back. And that all sounded great, until we found out that there's a state law that says if you get insurance revenue over $20,000, town meeting has to appropriate it. And that's simply because it's revenue, just like it's revenue from property taxes, just like it's revenue from the state for Chapter 70, educational aid, or any grants, or anything else. Anything over $20,000 for insurance needs to get appropriated by you guys. So what we need to do is we need to do this in two parts. We don't know exactly how much money is coming in from insurance, because I said the work is still going on. So our town accountant said, you know, what we should do is create a reserved-for-appropriation account, basically a holding account, that says as the money comes in, it goes in this particular place. If we don't do that, it goes into the general fund, and then it looks kind of awkward on the books that we have a few hundred thousand dollars sitting in, say, free cash, that we really don't have sitting in free cash. So this is a good way to allocate that. And then the follow-up to this is probably at the May town meeting, we have a second half of this, that then re-appropriates that back to some combination of the school building project account, as well as the school department, to cover their expenses with this, and then the whole thing is closed out. There's absolutely no tax impact to any of these insurance moving around. This is just money coming in and money going out, and it has to be allocated this particular way. That's about it.
Are there any questions on this article? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none. This requires a simple majority. Again, I will ask, is there any dissent to passing this article? Seeing none, the article passes unanimously. Well, at this time, I would like to remind everyone again, please turn your phones to vibrate and/or off unless you are in emergency personnel. Article 5, Chair recognizes Hal Davis.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the so-called grammar school property shown on Assessors' Map 163, Parcel 110, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, and for purposes of disposal by sale or lease, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey such property on such terms as it deems appropriate.
Most have been made and seconded. Do you have the floor?
Thank you. I guess if there's one thing that the town is in agreement, is most people want to see something done with the elementary school. I think it's been over 30 years since it's been used for school purposes, and there have been studies that have shown that if you wanted to use this building for municipal or school purposes, the cost of renovation would be about $6 million. And it's pretty well agreed that that's not going to happen and not worth that investment. So rather than just letting this building determined to sit there and become basically a ruse for pigeons, the Selectmen and the Economic Development Commission decided to be a little bit proactive and solicited some preliminary interest on would any developer be interested in this property. We received one proposal from a developer that has some sophisticated experience in developing properties for housing purposes, and they had proposed 24 units there. This was a preliminary proposal. The Board of Selectmen are not backing any proposal. The process to dispose of municipal property is regulated by Chapter 30B, Section 16 of the general laws, and requires a public bidding process to go through. And the Board of Selectmen did vote to put on the agenda at its next meeting to create a reuse and development committee, to work with the Board of Selectmen, and come up with the best proposal. Obviously, the town wants to turn this into a positive revenue source, number one, from the sale or lease of the property, and then finally, maybe getting it on the tax rolls. Potentially, it could return half a million to a million dollars on a sale, and potentially $70,000 to $100,000 in income. Now, there are some negatives with development at that site, as people have pointed out, traffic impinging on the use of the school campus. So the idea is to use this committee to look at all the pluses and minuses of development of that site, and then put together a proposal that would give the Board power to reject any proposal if it didn't meet those requirements, and so that there's no gun to the head of the Board of Selectmen or the town to accept anything. But the alternative is to let the building sit there, continue to deteriorate, or to try to be proactive and come up with a proposal that makes sense for the town financially and also is consistent with the use of that property for school uses, access, et cetera. So we're not wedded to any particular proposal. There might have been some sort of belief that the proposal that came before the Board of Selectmen was reviewed was one that the Board of Selectmen was backing, and we're not. And we'd have to throw the bidding process open to anybody else that was interested, and the bidding requirements would be such that if the Selectmen didn't receive a satisfactory proposal, it could reject all bids. So the question is, do you want to move forward? We need a two-thirds vote on this. The town will have plenty of chance to import. I visualize that this reuse committee would have a member from the school committee, the planning board, perhaps the police chief, so we get all points of view on this, and we try to fashion a proposal that's financially feasible for developer and advantageous to the town.
So this is when I talked about the scope of an article. This is one of the two articles that I was talking about. On the warrant is giving, is transferring the property to the Board of Selectmen's control, as Hal said, to do as they wish. I believe a lot of people here probably have questions and/or opinions on the specific proposal that has been brought up. I will allow questions generally on the proposal, but specifically, this is about the article as moved. So at this time, are there any questions for Hal? Please wait for the mic to arrive, and then go ahead and stand up, state your name, as well as your street, and then you may ask me the question.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Gervais, 18 Crescent Lane. My question is, who has ownership of the building right now? Who are we transferring it from? And also, why do we need to transfer ownership to the Board right now? Can we still form a committee? You know, being that we don't know what we're going to do with it. What is the pro position of doing that right now, as opposed to finding out what we're going to do with the building first?
Great. And what I'm going to do right now is turn it over to Hal to answer the question. I will then come back to you and ask you if your question has been answered and if you have a follow-up at that time.
The grammar school itself is currently in the ownership of the town itself, as opposed to the school committee. In order to be able to sell or dispose of the property, you have to pass this motion to give authority to the Board of Selectmen to go out for a public bid. But I can assure you, there'll be a lot of input before and after the bidding process that we come up with a proposal that makes sense for the town and hopefully is financially advantageous for the town.
Can you tell them why it has to be done in this order? In other words, why it has to be?
This is required in municipal law. We have town council over here, that this is the motion that was drafted by town council so that we can move forward. The question is, if you want to wait, you know, another 30 years, or we want to move forward and get some proposals in, after our RFP has been carefully reworked by this government. reworked by this committee. I think the time is right now. The town needs the tax revenue, so we, we think it's a good time to move ahead.
Was your question answered?
Yeah, I just have one.
Yep, go ahead.
What?
Please go ahead and stand.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So we can't form a subcommittee without it being transferred to the Board of Selectmen? Is that what you were just saying, or is that?
Do you want to go ahead and defer to the, to our attorney? Or would you like to handle that yourself?
Well, you can, the question is whether you want to move ahead or just form a committee or something.
Well, yeah, I mean, I do, of course.
So we, we figured we would do both at the same time, so that if there's a consensus reach, and by the way, any project that would be approved has to go through all of the permitting process, through the planning board, the ZBA, potentially, et cetera. So it's not something that's rubber stamped. So the idea is to work in concert, to have this committee ready to come up with a proposal and, you know, and not miss another cycle, development cycle on the, on the building.
Other questions? Over in the back, we're going to make you run. You just keep your hand up until Mitch gets over there. Thank you.
Sue Perkins, Wollam Lake Road. I wonder that after you find someone that wants the building and they buy the property, can they tear it down, since they're the owners?
That would be in the proposal, whether or not we would permit that or not. The one proposal that we had came, but that was informal. They found the building externally in the roof in pretty good condition compared to other grammar schools. So we think that it's more likely than not that somebody may want to restore it, and it would be an asset as far as from the architectural point of view. But that could be, that would be specified in the RFP.
Was your question answered? Okay. Other questions? Down in front?
Mike Hutnak, Northwest Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I'm just questioning right now, it seems like this is essentially writing a blank check to this subcommittee and the, the Board of Selectmen to turn the property over to them, and then they can, you know, decide on, on what's going to go forward with this, as opposed to having the residents of the town vote as to a particular project. This seems to be somewhat contrary to some of the other voting procedures that we've had in the past. More recently, the, the school project where there was multiple proposals that came forward. This year seems like we're handing it all over into the hands of a few select folks and kind of taking the, the final decision out of the residents' hands here in the town. You also mentioned, Hal, that you would need this vote to go forward to get a collective bid process going forward, but yet we've already got a few bids in, or one bid in, and you, you put it out on the market.
Just to answer your last question, first, it's not on the market. We didn't put a bid out. All we wanted to see was there any interest in coming before us. And we did find one developer, and unfortunately, the interest wasn't, wasn't stronger than that. Most developers aren't going to be interested in a project that is subject sometime in the future to a town meeting vote. This is the way that towns constantly are disposing of surplus property. It's not something new. It might be a little bit unique, because we don't have that much surplus municipal property, but every other town follows pretty much the same procedure. So the Selectmen, who are elected by the town, they have the economic and safety issues of the town in mind, and I think they would do a good job in working with this committee to come up with a good proposal. And the question is whether the town wants to put this off, you know, sometime in the future, or we want to move ahead with this and, and see if we can turn it into a positive financial asset for the town.
Was your question answered?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Down in back?
Bill Pivvis, Walnut Street. My understanding that a number of years ago, at a similar meeting, we voted to remodel that building, and at that time, we even specified a particular sum of money. Where did we stand with that particular article as, as you're proposing this article? Do we have to get rid of that article first before we can go on to do something such as this?
Just bear with me one second while I find the most appropriate person to answer that. You look, you look a little shaky about coming up.
Well, I'll give it an attempt. I don't have the exact dates of these meetings, but it's my understanding that at one point, this building was looked at to use for some school use, and I don't know the exact date. It was before my time here, and it was approved for that. Then subsequent to that, that, that dead approval was rescinded. So I don't believe there's any approval votes that are still valid for that project in relation to that building.
Was your question answered?
It seems to me that that was never put forward.
Hold on, sir, was your question answered?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, do you have a follow-up?
The, the response that Mr. Muziski put, put forth here is that it was rescinded, but I do not believe that we, we rescinded it at any town meeting, to my knowledge.
Okay, according to our town accountant, it would have, had to have been done at town meeting. But obviously, we can't come up with, with that at this time. Further questions? Right next to you.
Sherri Zetlin, Hilltop Drive. I'm just wondering if the building does get sold, where in the budget that money will end up going?
I believe it would go into the general fund. Sale of the building? Town council confirms it would go into the general fund?
Mr. Moderator, can I answer the prior question?
Sure. It looks like we actually have an answer to the prior question. So before we go back there, was your question answered?
Yes, it was, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On January 19th of 2000, special town meeting approved $2.4 million to renovate the old elementary school and authorize a school committee to complete this facility for school use. Then on April 4th of 2002, the special town meeting voted to rescind authorization to issue bonds in the amount of $2.4 million at that special town meeting for the repair and conversion of the old elementary school.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Cohen. Pardon me, I've got notes over there. I'd have to walk to bring the microphone to myself.
Thank you. I want to follow up to some extent for what Mr. Hutnak was discussing a minute ago. I, I have, sorry, I don't know how to use these things too well. On behalf of two separate school building committees, I've been through the, the old grammar school a number of times. I was never in it while it was operational, although I'm sure there are a number of people in this room that, that were.
Let me, let me just interrupt you for one second. Is this a, a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The, it, it's a great building. We, as I said, on, on two separate school building committees, we tried very hard to find school use for this. And we couldn't, because the cost is very high, and the reimbursement for school use is not there, and the space is simply too small. So a while back, the current school building committee did recommend to the Board of Selectmen to look for alternative uses, and I applaud the Board of Selectmen for continuing on that path, because I think that's what we should do. However, I have some concerns about the particular order of things and how they're being discussed. The Board of Selectmen can certainly continue on everything else that they have discussed, do an RFP, go out to bid, and everything else, create a subcommittee to look at uses and to look at concerns, and then come back to the Board of Selectmen with a finished product. As Mr. Hutnak said, that's exactly what we did with the school building project, and that's exactly what is done with everything else that comes before the town. Can you imagine if I had stood up on that stage and said, "We'd like $50 million to build a new school," and the only slide up there was, "Trust me, we'd have to have all of the details in order," and that's the appropriate thing? State law says that town meeting is the place for determining the sale of town property, and that's the way it should be. I think there is going to be a good outcome to this, but I think that the Board of Selectmen should have the confidence to go forward and come up with a project that will meet town meeting approval, as opposed to doing it the other way around. Hal may interpret some of that as being red tape. I think that's state law. That's the way it should be, that we are responsible for that building, and we have a close connection with that building. And really, my question is, why don't you do it that way? What is, what is the significant downside of going forward and determining a good project? This isn't a project that, that's going to be, going to happen in, in a month. This is a building that has been abandoned for 30 years. Sale is going to be continued by probably one to two years of construction before anything opens in there. For the item that they have discussed, and I'm not going to go into any detail on that, we're talking about a significant expansion again, so it's, you know, even, even more complexity to it. There are so many things that need to be sorted out as far as, as far as community input that should be decided right here, and I don't understand why the Board of Selectmen can't do it that way.
Well, I guess the Board of Selectmen and many people in the town live, live in the, in the real world, where developers come up with proposals, and we try to match that up with what the town has put together in a proposal through this committee process. But no developer is going to give a serious bid on a project that then he has to spend maybe $50,000 or $60,000 putting together the proposal application, and then put that before a town meeting and take that, you know, Douglas is not on Route 128. We have to, you know, struggle a little bit to encourage development in this town. And here's a piece of property that, nothing has happened for 30 years on it, and the Selectmen finally are moving forward on this. And we're going to solicit all points of view in the proposal, but to, to come back again to the town meeting is going to put things off, and in my experience, you won't get a serious bid. So if you just want to fool around with it and, and study it for some more time, you can do that. But if the town wants to go ahead, and we're very sensitive, we live in the town too, we want good uses for that property. It's not only money, it's safety, et cetera, but we want to get a good proposal, and we think this approach of having the reuse committee, and that's the way many towns have operated, and then the Select, the Selectmen go out and solicit bids and see if that matches up with that. And we have a lot of flexibility in how we can structure that. So I think that's the preferred approach, rather than to put something back on the shelf. It's up to the town meeting whether, whether you want to move forward or not on it.
Was your question answered?
Not particularly. I don't know whether I have a follow-up or a clarification.
A very brief follow-up.
Sure. Do I tend to talk a little much? I'm sorry. I, I'll disagree with Mr. Davis about this being the way it always is. One recent economic development project that we had, which unfortunately, due to no fault of anyone in town, it doesn't look like it's going anywhere, is the wind farm project. In the case of the wind farm project, the developers spent a considerable amount of time working with the Board of Selectmen and many other boards well in advance of town meeting to sort out all the details. The Board of Selectmen was confident with the proposal. We came to town meeting, and town meeting approved it. That's the way it should be done.
Well, I think you're comparing apples with oranges. The, the wind site was chosen after careful investigation because of the wind velocities at that site. This building is unfortunately not unique, and there are many other opportunities for developers to look at in other towns. So the question is, does Douglas want to do something with his property and live in the real world, or do we want to study it?
Okay, so we're obviously starting to move into debate. Before we, before we go any further into that, are there any other questions on this article? In the back.
Hi, Michael Maloney from 181 West Street. Just a quick question, what is this area zoned for?
Consult our engineer.
It's that village business.
Village business. Was your question answered, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Right over here.
My question, isn't there maybe a middle ground? You could have this committee that studies and comes up with the parameters that you want for the RFP. That could very well be brought to town meeting, rather than the blank slate of not knowing if the buildings would be torn down, or what parameters would be set.
Well, the problem with that is you won't have a real proposal until you go out with something and see what, what comes back. So are you going, you're not going to get a serious proposal again from a developer where time is money if they're going to have to go, be subject to town meeting approval of their particular proposal. So this committee puts together the outline of a proposal, this is what you have to bid on, can you meet those requirements? The developer, hopefully more than one, submits a proposal, and we look at that, and if it's not quite up to snuff, is it changed, or what do we have? But if you, the developers, in my opinion, and the opinion of other people in the real estate industry, are not going to be actively interested in this building if now they have to go back again to town meeting, there, there are other properties that they can spend time on. We only had one party interested in this building. It may, may be that we go through this process and nobody wants to accept the terms that we want. But if you want to do something with it, we thought this is the fastest way to come up with a good proposal, yet considering, you know, other interest in the town besides just the financial.
Was your question answered? Follow-up?
No, my question is not for the developer to give you the proposals and then that to come back. The middle ground would be for you to set up this committee, then to set the parameters that will go out to RFP, and the town meeting to approve the parameters that are going to be asked for of the developers.
Okay, and then the question is, what if, what if the developer comes in with something that's close but doesn't meet what the town meeting approved? So you're going to wait to another town meeting to amend the proposal, and the developer's going to be outside the door and, and going to another town? That's the problem. It's fine tuning the proposal. If it's with the Board of Selectmen, you can, and the committee, you can adjust that. So the town meeting might say, "We only want X, Y, and Z." A developer comes in and has X and Y. So you have to go back to town meeting, because the town meeting has set those parameters.
Other questions? Mr. Yacino.
I have a question about the zoning. You said it's zoned village business. Does that limit the types of proposals that you can receive? For example, the one that you had received was a proposal for housing. Is housing allowed in a village business zone?
If you did, the, the proposal from that developer would be what's called a friendly 40B project, which can override zoning. The preference probably for the board is to get any commercial development there as opposed to residential, if there's any interest in that. But yes, any use proposed by a developer has to be consistent with zoning, with the exception of that type of a housing project, if somebody came in with that, and would have to go through the planning board process and potentially ZBA if variances or whatever were necessary. So you're not exempt from the zoning requirements.
Was your question answered?
No, because he answered it both ways. He said, "Yes, but if it's friendly, we can do it the other way." And, and I'd really like to, to understand, if it's zoned village business, is there a current way, without having zoning laws, a variance issued, is there a way that that property can be turned into housing, residential use?
I asked, refer to our town engineer on the zoning question.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Kundif, town engineer. If there were a use that were proposed that is not allowed in If there were a use that were proposed that is not allowed in the zoning district that it currently is, there would have to be a zoning change unless, as Hal indicated, it were an affordable housing project coming in under Chapter 40B of the state law, which allows uses separate from our zoning, local zoning.
And the town would have to agree to that. The town would have to agree if it was going to come under that section of the general laws.
Other questions? In the back.
Fred Fontaine, Charles Street. I don't know if this can be answered, but is it the intent or the desire of the current board, keeping in mind that a future board may desire differently, to renovate the building or would they rather see it renovated in some way or you could decide to knock it down? If that be knocked down?
I can only speak for myself, but my preference would be to keep the building, have it renovated and brought up so it's an attractive building in that location rather than to tear it down. And I think probably anybody interested would probably want to use the building in one form or another rather than to tear it down.
Is your question answered?
That's only one person on the board, so.
Right. Unfortunately, you'd have to pull the entire board, which really isn't feasible at this point. Unless you two would like to weigh in on it, but it seems like that would be... Okay. Okay. So Hal basically has the general consensus of the board at this point. Other questions? All right, let's see. Go ahead.
Hi, Steve St. Louis, Wildflower Drive. If possible, I'd like to ask two. The first question is from the plot plan. It would appear that this plot includes the access to the school. Is that going to be rescinded and is that access to those schools going to be cut off from that side of town?
Is there a second question with that or is that both questions?
It's a different question.
Why don't you go ahead and ask them both at the same?
Okay. The second question is, it would appear from the explanation that was just given on the 40B housing that that would be something that would have to come back to the town for a vote after the developer spent the time to get the plan to present it. So in effect, the explanation that was just given is allowing for if they have to come back to the town for a vote, where we were told a short time ago that it wouldn't have to come back, that if we had to come back, we would be slowing the process down and chasing the developers away. And it seems to be those two things are incongruous with each other.
Well, to answer the second, the 40B is only one possible use for the property, and that offers numerous advantages for a developer, and in that case, they might go back. But we don't know if there's going to be one actually when they see what the town wants for the property, whether or not that's true. But other commercial or other residential uses would not require necessarily coming back to the town. And I think there's no problem with access.
You're correct. The road does go over the property, but there is an easement there, and certainly when the property would be conveyed out, we would reserve any rights for public access.
Has your question been answered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I keep getting to you two slow, so I'm going to give you the first crack at it. Any other questions? Go ahead, right down here.
John Bombard, 37 Gilboa. If this does turn into housing, is this going to actually cost the town money for schools and stuff?
That's one of the first things I thought of, is are we going to attract more people coming into the town because of that? And that's what the proposal will focus on. Obviously, we don't want to find out. It would have been better to keep the property vacant in its present condition. So that's certainly one of the considerations that we've got to go through. But on the other hand, there is a chance of realizing a substantial amount of money on the sale of the property and also from tax revenues. But we have to balance off that with, first of all, the financial costs of the other uses of town services, particularly schools, and also the public safety end. So there's no particular proposal that I'm endorsing. I'm just wanting to see what else is out there and what we can do. My choice would be a commercial type of project or maybe even a nonprofit use of the building.
Is your question answered?
Yes.
Great.
Hi, Bob Holmes, 108 Maple. Has the town considered any other type of uses for the building such as renovating and leasing and maybe developing an annuity stream from that building, that property?
Well, I don't think the town is sophisticated enough to do a real estate development itself and to appropriate money to try to do that. Some towns have a sophisticated economic development program where they might have funds available from some source to do that, but Douglas unfortunately doesn't have that. So I don't see the town as being either sophisticated or have enough money to do that on our own.
Has your question been answered?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the issue? Mr. Yacino.
The school committee sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen asking for some input. We have some concerns. We haven't heard back. I realize that the timing may be part of the problem. One of the things that would concern me, the road which is included in this parcel is the path that every kid that walks to school walks on. The road that this is on is the path that every car going up to those buildings drives on. And whatever type of development was going to take place there, there's definitely going to be an impact to the students who are walking there, to the people who are driving there. Currently, if the road is one-way during the school day, that means anybody leaving that property is going to have to drive up through the school grounds to get through. And it concerns me, the answer with the 40B and the friendly, I forget how you termed it, but that basically it could be converted to housing if it goes through this special process for low or moderate income housing without ever coming back really to the town for approval. And I understand that you envision creating a committee, but I think I would echo what some people before have said, which is that maybe there's a middle of the road here we can take. I mean, I don't want to see that building fall down, and if we don't do something with it, that is what's going to happen to it. It's just going to fall in. The town can't afford to renovate it, we know that. But the thing that really concerns me is that I'm worried that it is a blank check. The property can just be, once it's conveyed to the Board of Selectmen, to dispose of it as they wish. I just want to make sure that all the safeguards are in place for public safety. I don't know that anybody can stop the process if the Board of Selectmen and his EBA decide that they want to go forward with it. And that's one thing that really concerns me, is that there's an awful lot at stake here on both sides. Does economic development get the property back on the tax rolls? But on the other side of the coin, we have the safety of every kid in school, every kid that walks to school and all the people who are driving to drop their kids off, and it's already a heavily congested area. So I just, you know, I would urge that we think very carefully about what we're going to do with this property. And if it turns out that the only way we can dispose of it is by giving control to the Board of Selectmen, I would want assurances that somehow, before it was turned into, particularly in a housing, whether it's low or moderate, that it comes back so the people can approve such a use because it impacts almost everybody in town.
Would anyone else like to speak on the issue? In the back.
One quick question, and we were talking about the road that goes up, but when I was a child, that was my school that was there, of course, grammar school. There is another road between the Citco Station and of course the donut shop that's on Main Street. Is that anything to do with the town of Douglas? Is it a right of way that way too? Where would be eliminated the other side of the road, the other side? Is that called school court? Go ahead, Bill.
John, I don't have a good answer for you. I only have a little experience with school court. I know it was historically used to access that building. I don't know where the rights lie. Since my tenure here, it's really been just privately owned and privately maintained, so I don't have a good answer for you.
All right. Thank you. Can we move the question?
That was a really good try, but you can't do it after you've asked a question. Would anyone else like to speak on the issue? In the middle.
As much as I would like to see this building used because it's been empty way too long, but I do have some concerns which some other people here have expressed. This is in a really sensitive area, not just for road and traffic, and whatever goes in there is really near the elementary school. So I think we really need to take a good, hard look at this, and I for one have heard some good ideas here about the middle of the road, coming back so that the townspeople know what they're getting and they are able to vote on it.
Anyone else like to speak on the issue? Right behind you. Question's been called and seconded. Basically, what has just happened is somebody said that, you know what, we're done talking about this, we want to vote. That requires a two-thirds. So at this time, I will say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Let me back up because that seemed a little bit strong. What we're voting on is whether or not you're ready to end discussion. Okay? So let me try that one more time. If everyone is ready to move on and end discussion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Okay. We will now move on to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. I am going to call for a counted vote on this one. If all those in favor of the article could please signify by standing and raising your If you can't stand, you can sit down and just raise your placard. And please continue standing until I ask you to sit down. All those opposed, please stand and raise your placard. You may be seated. Again, Article 5 requires a two-thirds vote. The article does not pass. Sure. Article 5 fails with 96 in the yea and 88 in the no. Chair recognizes Mr. Bonham. No, he doesn't. Oh, okay. Apologies.
I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaws by deleting in its entirety Section 9.2.1 and inserting in place thereof Section 9.2.1 establishment. There is hereby established a Board of Appeals consisting of five members and two associate members appointed by the Selectmen, provided that such change shall not apply to applications now pending before the zoning Board of Appeals for which a public hearing has been ordered.
Most made and seconded. Hal, you have the floor.
Well, the problem with the existing zoning bylaw of three members of the ZBA is that it gives the power for one person to reject any action that requires a supermajority. By going to the five-person board, it would mean that you'd need at least two people dissenting in order to block action on a matter before the ZBA. And I think it was the consensus among a number of people in town and Selectmen, et cetera, that it's undemocratic to allow one individual on a board to be able to veto a project. And this would ensure that you'd need at least two members on those situations where you had a supermajority required.
The chair recognizes Mr. Marks.
The Douglas Planning Board held a public hearing on October 16th, 2012 regarding the proposal zoning bylaw change, which would increase the zoning Board of Appeals membership from three members to five members. After public discussion and input, the Board closed the public hearing on October 16th, 2012, and voted unanimously to support the proposed bylaw change.
Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Or in the back?
Dan Heaney, 44 Shady Lane. Chairman of the ZBA, and at the September meeting, the Board discussed this proposal and had no issue with going from three to five members.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the issue? This also requires a two-thirds vote, and I will do this by unanimous consent. Is there any dissent to passing Article 6? Seeing none, the article passes unanimously. Seeing none, the article passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaw by deleting in its entirety Section 3.2.2 and inserting in place thereof the language as written in the handout entitled "Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Section 3.2.2: Trailers."
Motion made and seconded. Before we go any further, does everyone have the handout? I should say, does anyone not have the handout? Over here, you do not? You do not? Do we get a couple of the... Go ahead and stand up if you don't have the handout that was given at the beginning of the meeting. In the back still? Last chance. It's making its way. Okay. Motion made. Is there a second? Okay. Motion made and seconded. Go ahead.
The Douglas Planning Board held a public hearing on October 16th, 2012 regarding the proposed zoning bylaw change, which would raise Section 3.2.2. Accessory use in all districts, use of trailers for non-construction storage. After public discussion and input, the Board made a number of modifications to improve the proposal. The Board then closed the public hearing on October 30th, 2012, and voted four to two to support the proposed bylaw as modified. This article is intended to provide detail to the overly broad section of the zoning bylaw. Currently, Section 3.2.2 of the zoning bylaw states, "In all districts other than the industrial districts, the use of trailers and semi-trailers for non-constructional storage shall be prohibited." The proposal allows trailers used for agricultural purposes, camper trailers, trails associated with household purposes, and trailers used for transporting recreational vehicles by right. It further allows other trailers to be permitted by the ZBA with certain conditions and limitations. It allows up to one trailer on lots 20,000 square feet or less, and up to three trailers on large apostles after obtaining a special permit from the ZBA where property or butters will be notified of the hearing. Finally, a set of mandatory conditions will be required for any trailer that is permitted. These conditions include minimum property setbacks and visual screening.
Again, I'm just going to remind everyone about the scope of the article. We're discussing the merits of this particular motion. Extraneous information, personal, is really going to be out of bounds on this. So keep it focused on the actual article itself. Are there any questions for Mr. Marx on this article?
Hi, Bob Holmes, Maple Street. Ernie, did I understand you correctly? I think I have two questions. Did you say that this, the recommended bylaw adds detail to the law? Is that what you said earlier?
If it's details as far as... The bylaw we thought was overly broad and was open to a lot of interpretation, and we just tried to make it more easily understandable for the residents and the voters.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused.
Was your question answered?
Well, I'm not sure.
Okay. Would you like a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess, Ernie, I'm a little confused because just reading this, and again, maybe I'm misunderstanding something here, but it appears that a lot of detail is being removed. You know, such as in B-1, in all districts except village residence, village business, et cetera, residential, commercial, has been removed. In other words, so where certain types of trailers were not allowed in the old law, they are now allowed in the new law because of this removal of this detail. Is that correct?
They were prohibited other than industrial areas before. This bylaw change would allow them to be used in other districts, yes.
We have to move on. Other questions?
Mike Barrett, Paul Wallace Street. Hey, Ernie, does that mean travel trailers, utility trailers, boat trailers, stuff like that? Those prohibited or those allowed?
May I just ask you to clarify your question? In the bylaw that's being proposed?
Yeah. Which trailer? Are those trailers allowed or not allowed?
Thank you.
In the bylaw being proposed, they would be allowed.
They're not allowed right now, camping trailers?
Just before we get too much further into this discussion, before you have a follow-up, please wait to be recognized again. Go ahead with your follow-up question.
I mean, are probably camping trails not recognized right now?
Not if they're not registered, no.
If they're registered, they're legal.
Sorry, we got to move on. So the way this works, just like I said, before we get too much further into this, I give you a chance to ask a question. I will always come back to you and ask if the question was answered and if you have a follow-up. At that point, you can follow up on your question or restate the question if you don't feel it was answered, hopefully in a way that might get you the answer that you're looking for. After that point, then we do move on to the next person. After the first-time speakers list is exhausted, then feel free to raise your hand again, and you may be called on for a second question. Any questions on how that works? Okay, great.
Wade LaValle, Manchuck Road. I just have a question regarding Section 1A-3 utility trailers. Where would, for example, a car trailer fall into that? If it's registered, is it excluded from this?
Town Council is being conferred with right now, so just hold on one second. I want to make sure that the question was heard, which it was...
I didn't hear what I was following up on the prior question.
Okay. All right. Let's go with the question on the floor right now. Can you please go ahead and restate your question?
Okay. Section 1A-3, utility trailers. The question is, where does a car trailer, registered car trailer, fall into it?
What kind of a trailer again? A car trailer?
Right. Would a car trailer be included in this?
I think it would probably be more under Number 4. If you're using it, I think it would depend on what type of car trailer you were talking about. There are large car trailers, and then there's a single car trailer you might have behind a camper or something. They're different animals altogether.
Okay, I'm talking...
Was your question answered?
No, it's not.
Okay. Please go ahead and follow up.
Just for clarification, I'm talking about maybe a 14-foot, 10-maxwell, single-car trailer. That can be used for hauling a tractor.
For instance.
For instance.
I still think there's probably room for interpretation, but I think when we were sitting, the Planning Board and myself and Mr. Kundif, we were trying to capture things that you would normally use for household purposes. A single trailer, to just my view, and ultimately, it's the Building Commissioner who gets a chance to interpret these things, as well as the Zoning Board, perhaps. But something that would be commonly used, a single-car trailer would probably fit under Number 4 more closely.
Okay. Thank you.
See, I just stole my gavel. So one of the prior questions was about a camping trailer under the existing bylaw, and how would that be interpreted? The existing bylaw says, "In all districts other than the industrial districts, the use of trailers and semi-trailers for non-construction storage shall be prohibited." So it would have to be storage and non-construction storage. A camping trailer is not really storage. It's a camping trailer, in which case it'd probably be viewed under more of the accessory. So if you have a house and you want to store a camping trailer on your property, a little pop-up or what have you, that would not be non-construction storage. So I don't think the existing bylaw prohibits it. What it prohibits is trailers that are being used for storage that isn't related to a construction enterprise. That's the prohibition as it exists right now.
Other questions? Right in the back.
Paula Brulet, U Street. Under Section B-1, I just want to make sure I understand that in the original, in the beginning part of that sentence, it says, "On any lot or parcel greater than 20,000 square feet, not more than three containers." 20,000 square feet being a half-acre lot, more or less?
Is that the question?
That's one question, and then I have a second question.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and get them both out?
Under Section B... Oh, is it B? 1-E, "The trailers are reasonably screened from view." These are, again, conditions of the special permit. What does reasonably mean?
What does reasonably mean? Yeah, that was the topic of discussion. We did try to set some guidelines where setbacks and painting it the same color as your house, if it's up off the ground, putting a skirt around it. The interpretation of reasonably, I'll leave that to Town Council. He had a good explanation of that when we discussed it.
It's a good explanation in that so much of... This is a special permit requirement. You have a number of special permit requirements for... That criteria there is under the special permit part of the trailers. There are a number of requirements in your zoning bylaws that rely upon the particular permit-granting authority's judgment calls, and those are usually based upon reasonableness. It sounds like a vanilla term, but so much of the law doesn't operate on exact precision when it comes to special permits. It reflects the reasonable judgment of those people that are either appointed or elected for either the Zoning Board or the Planning Board. So it's the Planning Board or the Zoning Board sitting and deciding if it's adequate screening. They get that job, as great as that job is, to decide if it's reasonable or not. That's challengeable, but ultimately, the courts will defer to that. That's why you have people elected or appointed to serve on these boards, to make reasonable judgments in the case of a special permit. So there's no magic to the language. And in fact, in my experience, when you try and define exactly what that screening will be, you'll end up missing something or forgetting to expand on it enough. So by giving some discretion to your boards, which are accountable in the appointment and elective processes, you're able to capture more potential possibilities for any particular property, whether it's trees or a structure that would do the screening.
Is your question answered?
My question?
Go ahead. Follow-up?
About the B-1.
Okay.
She was asking if it was... Can you go ahead and restate the question, please?
The question is, I just want to confirm that a 20,000-square-foot lot, which is approximately a half an acre, you can allow three containers on that lot or anything larger. So anybody currently with a half-acre lot, their next-door neighbor on a half-acre lot can have three containers on it, reasonably screened.
By a special permit. So it's not allowed necessarily. They could decide two, they could decide zero, but you would need to get a special permit. But the upside, the maximum on that, is three for 20,000 or greater. Yes. Yes, special permit. From the ZBA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
Linda Brown, 166 Perry Street. Does this bylaw grandfather-in existing trailers on property? And my second question is, it says in the first paragraph, "Use of trailers for non-construction storage in all districts."
Hold on. Let me just hold you right there. I'm sorry. Which section did you say?
The first paragraph, Number 1. Says, "Use of trailers for non-construction storage in all districts." That means industrial, too. So is this going to also affect industries and their trailers?
So the last question first. Industrial districts have some other bylaws that allow storage trailers, so this doesn't affect that or limit that provision. So it's not curtailing any other activities that are allowed in the industrial district under other provisions in the bylaws. As to your first question, it would grandfather any legal trailers that someone might have on their property. But if there is a trailer on someone's property that is illegal today, then there's no grandfathering under the law for things that are illegal ever. So it would have to be legal before the adoption of the bylaw, or I guess it could be legal prior to the date of even the existing bylaw, and that might be entitled to some grandfathering. But if someone has a trailer that's not allowed today, this doesn't create grandfathering for it. It may allow it, as a matter of right, under the new provisions, but it doesn't create grandfathering for something that still isn't allowed today.
Is your question answered? Okay. Other questions?
Lisa Mazinski, 60 Oak Street. Given that a non-construction trailer or trailers on property then replaces an actual storage facility, how will these be taxed?
I'm not sure what you mean by "storage facility."
So in most cases, someone who needs that much storage would build a garage or a building that would then be taxed. So in place of that, if you had a situation where three trailers were then allowed, how would they be taxed?
I would probably defer to the assessors on that. I wish I had a good answer for you there. I think that would be determined based upon the permanence of those particular structures. But I can't give you an answer as to what use codes they might be for the Board of Assessors on that. Board of Assessors on that. That would be mere conjecture on my part. Some might be taxable, some might not be, depending upon the particular use, the duration, the seasonal use, whether they're permanent and kind of fixed, or whether or not they're more transient in nature. I wish I could give you an accurate answer, but it wouldn't be fair for me to do that.
Is there anyone over here that wants to take a stab at it, or was that the correct answer? Go ahead.
I can't tell you definitely, but... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Beth McKay. I'm the principal assessor. If the trailers are going to have skirts and no wheels, to me, it's going to be a permanent structure. It should be taxed as a storage unit.
Is your question answered?
It sounds like there's still a lot of work to figure out as far as how that evolves. So, I'd like to follow up. There's no timeframe, then, with these trailers, that they would be there seasonally or permanently? There's no specification in the proposed bylaw?
No. No is the answer I got. Other questions? Over in the back.
Just some clarification. My name is Brett Allen. I'm on Manchug. So, you're telling me today that my 20-foot enclosed trailer that is registered in Massachusetts is illegal? My first question. Second question would be, I can haul snowmobiles, I can haul those kind of things, but I intended to buy in it to store my car in it. Is that under...
We have to keep the questions more, you know, on this. So, the basic question you have is, would a 20-foot...
Enclosed?
Enclosed.
Car hauler.
Car hauler be legal?
In the current...
Well, it's for this.
Right. Would it fall under number A-3?
Okay.
Yeah, I think if it's registered, you may likely fall under A-3 for that purpose. But for a single car, again, it's got to be accessory. I think that there's a number of things that would have to be examined for those purposes. Again, they're trying to capture things that people might do. So, under A-4 or A-3, trying to... Is it for recreational or for a car itself?
For a car. I store my car in it.
It'd probably fit more under four, if it is a typical kind of thing. Now, if you were storing, say, a race car and for something like that, it might be a little bit different. So, the term accessory relates to things that people might normally have as accessory to their residential use. So, if it's commonly used by people for storage of a car seasonally or whatever, then it's conceivable it would fit under that.
Thank you. Was your question answered? Thank you. Right over in the back.
We have many horse owners in the town of Douglas that doesn't necessarily keep their horses at home. They would board them out at a boarding facility. But they may not be able to park their horse trailer at the boarding facility. What section would these horse trailers, that they would bring home to their principal residence, what would that fall under?
There are agricultural trailers allowed, but they should be... They're allowed on the property that has the agricultural purpose under number one. And then again, under number three and number four, you have things that... Three, under three, for recreational purposes, which could potentially include something similar, or number four, for a customary household purpose. So, if you have horses and you're not keeping them on the property, but you're keeping a trailer, I think it's conceivable, depending upon the size of it, that it might be considered accessory to a single, you know, to a homeowner's use. However, if it was more extensive and you were using it as part of, say, a commercial horse breeding enterprise, it might be beyond accessory and could only be allowed on an agricultural property itself. Again, I think it would depend upon what you're using it for. I don't think there's any intent in the bylaw to deprive people of things of the types of trailers. In fact, there was every intent in the bylaw by the planning board to capture everything that people might want to have, might use on their property as kind of adjunct to a normal use of a property. We wanted to let people have those trailers and have some certainty that they can keep them. We knew that we wouldn't be able to capture every single possible use, which is why we threw in some of the et ceteras and some of the basic examples. But I think that that could be expanded upon, based upon what's commonly used. Again, I think the difference for the horse trailer is going to be whether or not, hey, I've got a horse or two, and I go and pick them up at the stable or bring them to a show or whatever, versus, I have a 10-horse trailer and it's part of a more of a horse breeding exercise, which might be more agricultural under the first provision there.
Is your question answered?
Somewhat.
You have a follow up?
Again, he was referring to agricultural purposes. The existing home is not in an agriculturally zoned area. What section would be to keep this two-horse trailer or, say, a three- or four-horse trailer that has a camping section to it also? What section would we keep this under? Is it recreational? Because you were not, you know, specifically mentioning horse trailers. And as I said, this is a very large population of horses in Douglas.
Yes.
And I think it should be addressed so people know what their rights are.
No, it's a question. It's where does it fall? Where does a horse trailer fall? Or does it?
The horse trailer doesn't fall expressly with any of the provisions. Again, I'm trying to extrapolate with respect to Section 4 where it could be considered. Ernie and I were just mentioning that during the course of the public hearing, it didn't come up. And perhaps that would be something that someone may want to consider by way of an amendment or otherwise in the future or tonight. But it was those types of things that the intent of number four was to kind of have a catch-all for things that people would use customarily for storage on their properties. Again, the camping trailer is a different issue altogether.
Other questions? Down here.
Hi, Steve Huttnack from 28 Hemlock Street. "My understanding is that any registered vehicle, any registered vehicle or trailer is allowed on anybody's property. I can have a tractor trailer out in front of my house. If I'm driving it, I stop it home, it stays overnight. If I take a vacation, I can park it in my yard. I think this amendment is probably written for non-registered vehicles. And that's what a lot of people are missing the point on, is that we're talking about trailers that people move in on their property that aren't registered, and they're using them for storage, and they don't have one, two, three, four, or five, and the neighbors get upset. Am I wrong, or am I right? That's my question.
Well, I think part of that, part of the types of trailers that you referenced could be included in here. But the fact that a vehicle, trailer or otherwise, is registered doesn't mean that zoning can't regulate its use or prohibition on a particular property. For example, I know of many zoning bylaws in other towns that would not allow commercial vehicles in residential zones. It happens. So, or if you drove a tractor trailer for a living, I can think of examples in other towns where it would be prohibited to be parked on your property for, under either general or zoning bylaws. So, I don't want to say that any particular type of trailer that you've mentioned doesn't fit in with any of these here or in some other part of the zoning bylaws. But what I am saying is that the fact that it's registered isn't necessarily mean that it could not be regulated or prohibited under zoning.
Is your question answered?
Partially.
And you have a follow up?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Then, let's go specifically to the snowmobile trailers and the horse trailers and the car trailers that house one vehicle that I use to tow a farm tractor, a lawn and garden tractor with. As long as that is registered, then this bylaw does not prohibit the storage of that on my property. That's the way I'm interpreting this, that if my trailer was unregistered, then I have to remove it from the property.
So, the question is, is that the correct interpretation?
It is. It might be going a little further even than the bylaw says. The bylaw has, as a matter of right, whether registered or unregistered, permission to use trailers for those kinds of recreational things like the snowmobile. We talked about some ambiguity with respect to horse trailers, but many of the types of trailers that you mentioned, the typical recreational things or the household things for taking trash or firewood or things like that around, registered or unregistered, and I'll leave it to you whether or not you have to register them as a matter of law, those would be allowed under some of these other elements here.
Okay. Other questions? Right over here.
Hi, Joe Pinto, 102 Main Street. "My question's simple. I've got a 30-foot camper. Is it permissible to store that in my second driveway during the winter?"
Section 2, A-2, "Camping trailers, provided that such vehicles are used solely for recreational purposes, and further, the number of such camping trailers shall not exceed two per lot or parcel." I think the only limitation on that, to be fair, is that if you have a 900-square-foot house and you have a 2,000-square-foot trailer, it's not accessory anymore. It's bigger than the house. It should still be kind of in scale with what you have there.
Well, I've got more than half an acre or so.
Yeah.
Was your question answered?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? In the middle.
Barbara Van Reed, Martin Road. "I have two questions. The first one is, does the current bylaw, as it now stands, it's much simpler in form, but does it prohibit any of these vehicles or trailers that people have been talking about? And number two, do I read the second part of this bylaw? The proposition is that if you have a half-acre lot or larger, you can have three semi-tractor trailers on that lot. And it's my understanding, I've done some research, that these trailers can be 53 feet long or longer, perhaps. They are eight and a half feet wide and nine feet high. And I'd like to understand how three of those I can hide on my half-acre lot. I'd also venture to say that three of those, that probably, when you put the square footage together, exceed the size of an average house. So, I'd like to know if I understand that correctly, that that would be allowed."
First question, the current bylaw, again, only applies to a prohibition of non-construction storage trailers. Other types of trailers that are not non-construction storage that are accessory may still be allowed, depending upon the nature and how accessory they may be. Again, the current bylaw only relates to non-construction storage, and it's a prohibition there. As to your second question, I think in part, you're correct that there is a potential for three sizable trailers on a 20,000-square-foot lot, provided, however, that that special permit could be denied or limited in scope, size of trailers, number of trailers, or what have you. For example, if you had three big 53-foot trailers, I don't know how big they are, I'll take your word for it, and you went to the zoning board for a special permit, they could say no? They could say yes? They could say, yes, but only one trailer and screened in X way? Or they could say, yes, but it can't be a trailer of a certain size? They can place as many conditions on it as possible because it's a special permit. But the whole range, the whole spectrum, from yes to no to everything in between, is possible through a special permit there. But again, it has to go through that process, including potential rights of appeal by anyone who might be an interested party and opposes the special permit.
Is your question answered? Other questions? Right in the back.
The idea seems to be that...
Hold on. Let me stop you right there. Naaman Street, please.
My apologies. Sean Aldrich, 8 Sunset Drive. "I'm getting that at the moment, that as it stands, isn't correct for Douglas. Most of the permits that people have applied for, have they been denied because it's too restrictive? Or what has motivated now to be the time that this has been proposed?"
Okay. There's no... Under the current bylaw, there's not a permit granting process. It's a mere, it states a prohibition. So, to the extent that there's any activity under the current bylaw, it might be in the nature of someone has a trailer on their property, and there has to be some enforcement against that illegal, non-construction storage trailer. As to the second part of your question, I'm not sure 100%, but the genesis of this change was a request by a property owner in town to revise the current bylaw and have a more broader scope of review for different kinds of trailers. The planning board took what was originally proposed and actually changed it a great deal to try and get with something that would kind of work within what they felt was a good fix for what we have currently. I don't know if that answers the second part of your question.
Is your question answered? I seem to be getting that a lot. Go ahead, your follow up.
So, basically, now, you did acknowledge that there's one person in town who has expressed concern.
We're not going to get into, there's one person that wants this, there's one person that doesn't.
I was just going to say, has law enforcement been removing large numbers of trailers over the last couple of years, or...
There has been enforcement throughout the last few years with respect to trailers. I'm not going to mention specifics. I don't think that's fair to anyone. The town has been involved in some litigation in the past on the subject. So, would I say that there's widespread abuse of trailer storage in town? I would not, based upon what my experience is in talking to enforcement staff. It's not law enforcement, by the way. It's more zoning enforcement, just as powerful, though, Adele. So, it's... There has been some activity, but I wouldn't say that there's an epidemic of trailers, at least as far as the activity in the enforcement. I don't live in town, so I don't travel around and see how many trailers there may be out there, though. But we haven't been overrun with enforcement here.
Other questions?
No other questions.
Not yet. Other questions? Right here.
Joan Bombara, Gilboa Street. "Under the current bylaw that we have, what trailers are legal and are not legal in town? Because the way I interpret it, every trailer in town is illegal. Registered, not registered, really doesn't matter." really doesn't matter.
Again, non-construction storage trailers, and the, the definition of trailer is open to some interpretation, and I don't want, I can't pin down exactly the scope of what would be defined as trailer. We've had one instance in town where we had to go to court and get an interpretation of the definition of trailer. But it would have to be a non, a trailer for non-construction storage. There are many kinds of trailers that are not non-construction storage that don't fall under the current prohibition.
Which would be snowmobile trailers?
Is your question answered?
Yes.
Do you have a follow-up?
So, that would include snowmobile trailers, cot-trailers, the trailer to take your trash to the dump?
It, it could potentially. It could include, but it would have to be for storage purpose, and it would have to meet the definition of trailer or semi-trailer. Now, for example, the question has come to me over the last 24 hours of, would say a simple boat trailer, you know, little rack, kind of like a lattice-based boat trailer, fit under that category? I suppose it's possible that some could interpret that as fitting within this, but I've represented dozens and dozens of communities. I've never seen a zoning officer ever use zoning to prohibit something small-scale like that. I haven't. So, again, that's, the beauty is in the eye of the zoning enforcement group in town, but you are correct on some level that there is some leeway to consider certain kinds of storage trailers to be prohibited and certain not. But as it stands, the full range and possibility of it, I can't answer that with accuracy because I think there's some trailers that, that would be prohibited and some that wouldn't. But that's why we have staff that interprets these things.
Other questions? Seeing none. Go ahead.
Linda Bombara, Gilboa Street. Is the town exempt from the bylaw because on all of the ballfield properties, they contain these storage units that are not registered? They store whatever they store, but the town itself, I think just about every ballfield, including the soccer field, has one of these storage containers. So, my question would be, is the town exempt from these bylaws?
Towns are not exempt from zoning. I, I can't answer with respect to any particular trailer that, that may be out there in town because I don't have the facts. But to answer the core question, towns don't get a free ride on zoning. The state does, but the towns do not.
So, my follow-up question would be, if this bylaw does not go through, is the town going to also have to remove these storage trailers from these ballfields and soccer fields?
If it's non-construction storage and it's interpreted to be a trailer, there is a potential that it, that it would be prohibited under the current bylaw. But I, again, I don't have the facts. But you're, you're correct. If it met the definition, the town would have to comply with it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Last call for questions. In the middle.
Shirley Masinski, 60 Oak Street. I'd like to know who or how is this bylaw going to be enforced when the present bylaw isn't being enforced?
Well, I'm not going to speak to whether or not the current bylaw is enforced adequately, but all zoning is enforced at the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer, which happens to be the building commissioner. But any person can request enforcement of the zoning enforcement officer. Obviously, it's a, it's a big town, and the zoning enforcement officer can't be on every property at every time, but she is responsive to zoning enforcement requests that anyone may give, to the extent that they have one. And that's under law. There's a requirement to respond to all those requests.
Is your question answered? Okay. Right over here.
I have a question. I want to be sure that we know what we're voting on here. If we do vote for this, are we voting to actually clear up the confusion like us? Right now, is the question, is this, under the present law as it stands now, the question would be, if you had a snowmobile trailer, you're storing a snowmobile in it, could be interpreted that it's not allowed? But if we vote this in, what we're saying is, yes, you can have these things by right, the snowmobile trailer, the camping trailer, and different things that are on here. And then, the second part of this, if we vote for this, these pod things, these metal, little metal pods that people sometimes use for storage, if we vote for this by getting a special permit, going through what the planning board says we have to have, they will be now allowed by special permit, where now they're not allowed no matter what? Is that what we're voting on?
Well, yes and yes. On some level, I think the first, the first part of your question includes the premise that there's some confusion as to the application of section 3.22 as it exists now. As someone who reviews enforcement requests when asked by the building commissioner, I'm certainly aware of some controversy over, I'm not aware of any areas where there's been confusion in the part of the enforcement. As to the second question, I think you are accurately describing the, the range of possibilities. That being said, no bylaw is perfect. We've already had discussion of where a horse trailer might fall. So, might there still be some uncertainty and some gray area? Perhaps in some areas. But certainly, this provides more classes of particular uses and more of a roadmap, depending upon what kind of trailer you want to have.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to debate. Would anyone like to speak on the issue? This is the part where you would move the question if you wanted to, after you were recognized. Over here.
Dan Heaney, 44, Sheri Lane Douglas. I invite the building commissioner to correct me if I'm wrong. I believe under current zoning, if you have a boat trailer, a horse trailer, a car trailer, a camping trailer, if they're registered, you're allowed to keep that on your property. If, and you're also allowed one unregistered vehicle on your property. So, if you have a camping trailer that you take off the road, doesn't mean you're illegal. By passing this, the only thing it would change is that people would be allowed by special permit to have non-construction storage on their lot. And as a member of the ZBA, I don't think that anybody should have the power to stick one, two, three trailers in their neighbor's face by getting a special permit. So, I really think you're giving too much power to ZBA if this was to pass. And I believe, Adele, am I correct, and people could have a boat trailer, a car trailer, as long as it's registered, and you're allowed one unregistered vehicle on your property? So, somebody could technically have a boat trailer, excuse me, and an unregistered camper for the season and be legal. So, you're allowed to do that currently. If this fails, you're still allowed to do that.
Would anyone else like to speak on the issue? Over here.
Paul Peterson, 30 Main Street. The present bylaw has really not been in, in town that long. 2004 is when we voted for it at a town meeting. We recertified our existing bylaws, and the non-construction storage, part of it went through without being contested. I think your best, your best bet now is you can have a trailer, as long as it's registered or maybe unregistered for a, a season, you can, you can still have that under the existing zoning bylaws. And it's just a one-sentence bylaw. You can, you can have, have your trailer, and as long as it's not used for storage, you're all set.
Anyone else like to speak on the issue? Right behind you.
Abenchesbro, Church Street. The version of the bylaw you have is version number, or draft number six, we refer to it. The planning board has been working on this for the better part of many months, and we spent many hours on this. We did have a public hearing, and we took in some excellent comments from people who attended that hearing, and we adjusted the bylaw to accommodate their concerns. The building inspector also had comments, and I believe we addressed all of her comments in a positive way. We have struggled with this. The, the planning board debated it for a long time. I think it does bring clarity to the present situation. There is one, I think, a little confusion here when, when people simply say that on a lot of 20,000 square feet or more, you're going to see three of these trailer, storage trailers-like things. I think you have to appreciate the special permit process. It's not easy. And each situation will be looked at carefully by the ZBA. All those conditions you see there must be met. Again, it's a high hurdle. Also, you would have to go before the ZBA and with a site plan and say, this is where I plan to put this type of trailer. And they would have to look at that, look to see if it's reasonably screened, within the dimensional requirements, reasonably screened, not just from the road, but from the abutters. Also, because it's a public hearing, all the abutters would be notified so they could come. And one of the criteria that the ZBA often has to or does take into account is whether a use is, is more or less detrimental to the neighborhood. And if all the abutters show up, thumbs down, I would think they would take serious account of that and probably end up not allowing a big storage container on that property. So, I, I think you have to give the ZBA some leeway here, but it's not a giveaway by any means. But I do believe this is a private property rights type of issue, where if you have private property, you should be able to use it as you see fit, and especially if you're paying taxes. But you shouldn't be offensive to any neighbor or anyone else. There have to be some limits, and I think this bylaw sets those limits in a reasonable manner. But I intend to support this, and I hope you do too.
Anyone else like to speak on the issue? Down front? Sorry, down in front.
Pam Holmes, 108 Maple Street, Douglas. First of all, let me say that I am not enamored of laws. I think that both, both on the federal, state, and local level, we have lotted ourselves into a corner, and we'd be much better off if we did things simply looking to citizens to act responsibly. However, the town of Douglas has bylaws, kind of like fences make good neighbors. You regulate what people do so that you protect your property, all, everyone's property. Property in the town of Douglas, the value of it is, is very valuable to everyone. The common look or character of Douglas was a concern to a number of people, actually was a concern to the Board of Selectmen back in mid-'90s. They got together and they decided we needed to have a comprehensive plan or a master So, they started a process that involved the whole town. Letters went to the residents of the town, and lots of people got together and came and did a study, committed to making a master plan, hired a, a company. And they came and they actually put on paper the master plan, what all the residents of town that participated wanted for the town. For those of you who have moved in in the last five years or 10 years, you're seeing the results of that. You moved here because of what the master plan said we wanted for the town of Douglas and, and, and what we want to keep it to be. And to that end, bylaws were put together by a renowned attorney who specializes in zoning law. One of the zoning laws is zoning law 3.2.2. I'm proud to say that the chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Committee just spoke, Mr. Peterson. Right now, the bylaw that we have allows all trailers in the town of Douglas. There is nothing prohibiting boat trailers, recreational trailers, et cetera, and I think we're clear on that. However, there are some people that have been trying to say that no trailers are allowed. Let me also say that there is another bylaw in our set of bylaws, and it's 6.2. And it talks to unregistered motor vehicles. And my understanding from reading that bylaw, a lot actually allows, let me, let me read it to you, if that's, if you would indulge me. I'll read quickly. It's, it's kind of important, you'll see. "Not more than one unregistered motor vehicle or trailer which is unfit for use, permanently disabled, or has been dismantled, or are otherwise inoperative, shall be stored, parked, or placed upon any land in the town for more than 30 days, unless such vehicle is kept within a building, or is otherwise screened or located so that it cannot be seen from a public highway or from a budding property." Sound familiar? That's, that's existing. That means that people who have a large piece of property and want to keep a trailer, one trailer, one container, one storage trailer, can keep it there with no, with, with no problem. Now, I attended the public hearing, actually, it was the first public hearing on this bylaw. And there were comments, I made a bunch of them, for which I will be remembered, I'm sure, Mr. Marx. And the building inspector, I understand, did make some comments. One of the things that she was worried about was the part of the bylaw that talks about the reasonably screened comment under, it's actually, it's number E. It's B1E. And it says, trailers are reasonably screened from view from any public way or budding property. If a trailer or a storage trailer is allowed, and the zoning board gives conditions on that, and then the homeowner changes that screening, how then is the building commissioner, who is the zoning enforcement officer, to figure out what is reasonable? This is leaving her, that person in a really untenable position. My hope is that this is defeated. The town doesn't need to change. We don't want to alter the character anymore. So, please, consider defeating this.
Anyone else like to speak on the issue? Right over in the middle. Again, you have to be recognized to move the question. Right over in the middle.
Hi, Tom Rochon, 230 Perry Street. I moved to Douglas 13 years ago. I fell in love with this town because of the charm. I love driving through this town. The last thing I want to see is pretty little rows of trailer trucks sitting in people's driveways because there's about 5,000 square feet in a 50-foot trailer. Three of those gets you a 15,000-foot garage for 4,500 bucks. Let's get people to pull building permits, put up garages, and let's this town look aesthetic. Beautiful. Keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the issue? Right next to you.
Hi, Gina Muscatel, 48 Orange Street. I, I, the, the whole part of it that I have a problem with is just going before a board, and what I consider unreasonable might be not something they consider unreasonable. And then, there's that frustration between two neighbors, and then wondering, is your property value going down because you're having such unsightly things next door to you? I, I disagree with passing this for that reason. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the issue? Would anyone else like to speak on the, there you go. Please wait, wait till you get the mic. Please wait till you get the mic. Wade LaValle, Manchog Road. Vote to move the question? Question's been called and seconded. So what we will be voting on right now is whether or not you're ready to end discussion on this article. All those in favor of ending discussion on this article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be nay, but still, I'm going to say that you probably lost that one. Carries by a two-thirds. We will now move to a vote on this article. It does require a two-thirds, and I will ask for a counted vote. All those in favor, please stand and hold up your placard of passing Article 6, 7. Apologize. Article 7 fails by a vote of 104 in the yes, 72 in the no. I noticed a lot of new faces here tonight, and I appreciate everyone coming out, partaking in town meeting. There's a lot of ways-- Hold on just one second, please. There's a lot of ways to get involved in the town, and one of those ways is the Finance Committee. It's a very, very important committee in our town that goes through, works with all the departments, and tries to make recommendations, as well as work with them, to set our budgets for current years. I have two openings on that committee. If you're interested, please-- Yes. Please either come see me after the meeting, or you can call Town Hall and go ahead and give your information to Suzanne Kane, and she will go ahead and get your information to me. So I felt like I was in a haunted house there for a second. Also, as I was reminded, please recycle, turn these in at the end of the meeting. And at that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. It's moved, seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're adjourned. See you next time.